Call the meeting to order. Roll call, Chairperson Renee Wells here. Vice Chair John Hughes absent. Commissioners Eric Martin.
Here.
Andreas Rodeus.
Present.
Sean Herrera.
Present.
And Airport Director Executive Secretary Jeff.
Here.
Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Verification of agenda posting. The agenda for the Regular Airport Advisory Commission of the City of Hollister meeting of August 28th, 2024 posted on the bulletin board at City Hall on August 23rd, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. per Government Code Section 54954.2. We have a staff introduction?
Yes, it is my. It is my pleasure to call up Gabriel Martinez, our newest addition to the maintenance group here at the airport. So Gabe, if you'd like to come up and give us a little self-introduction.
And is this a full-time position?
It is a full-time position.
Hello.
Welcome, Gabe.
Thank you. Hello, well, my name is Gabriel Martinez. I am the Hollister Municipal Airport Maintenance Worker. I have been working with the City of Hollister since March of this year. I started off with the Parks and Recreation Department, and I recently got the full-time job for the airport. And I've been living with the City of Hollister since, for about 10 years now. And, and now I'm, I am grateful to be a part of this team now.
And I would just add to that, that we were impressed with Gabe as he helped us with Parks and Rec and in that role, he came out and he helped us set up for the Fourth of July event. So he's a contributor to the success of that piece and super excited to have him join us full-time.
Great, welcome.
Welcome, Gabe. Excuse me. Do we have any public input for tonight? These are to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. And if you want to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, you need to fill out one of the yellow little cards and bring it over here to Katie. Do we have any public comment?
We do. Fred Meyer, you're the first one. And I also have documents that I'm going to pass out for him.
My name is Fred Meyer. I've been hanging, I'm renting, I rented hangar 13G from 2001 to 21, that's 20 years. And I worked under the Commission for about 15 years as an Airport Commissioner. And I'm the Treasurer of the EA Chapter in California. And the reason I'm here tonight is I heard something about the airport might be operating in the red, and I don't understand how that can happen. Let me go back a little bit here. I have a handout that I gave out. Do people have it?
Yes, we've all been given it.
You do have it?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, Mike Chambles, he was the Airport Director from 2008 to 2018. And during that time, the airport was well in the green in addition to be able to, we set up funds for, matching funds for FAA grants, airport building improvements, ACIPs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And at that time, we had enough funds to do all these things on the present, the present rents. Now below there have summarized some of the rents that I, I understand the hangar rent now is about $4.73 a month, something like that. And that's, that's .473 cents per square foot, that's how it's calculated. And I just have the T-hanger rents here and the two executive hangars estimated cost and the total income from those for the year is at $542,747 bucks approximately. Now, in addition to those rents, the, the following rents went to the airport after the leases expired, probably between six and three years ago, something like that. And one of them is the Hugh Bickle complex hangars and offices. And that income went to the, to the airport fund, and that's, that should be a very significant amount of money. Then the Jerry Gabe hangar, large hangar went, that's a corporate hangar. That was turned over to the city when the lease ran out. And then there's also, I'm not sure, the new Sal Rabino huge hangar. I'm not familiar with, with the rent, if that's bringing the rent or what the deals and that, but it's a huge hangar. And then I don't have, the other business rents, the Zero, and I'm not familiar, I haven't out to the airport that much lately, but there's probably a lot of other rents. And I just kind of, I don't understand how the airport can be operated in the red. So I'm trying to just, to help you with some input, okay? And I guess that's about it. I have my name and telephone number, email address. If you want to call me up and ask me any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. You have any questions now? No, thanks.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
I, I don't recommend back and forth with the public speaker.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Fred. If there is a question that you would like answered that staff could answer, it would be appropriate to ask the staff that question.
May I ask Jeff if, if it's open to the public to receive copies of the budget and what the increases were and what the current budget is for this fiscal year?
I believe that the city will be publishing the budget for, for public availability. We also gave the Commission a review back in May, you may remember. So, so the Commission should be well-versed on, on the budgetary situation of the airport. And if individuals, members of the public have concerns, they're always welcome to come, schedule a meeting with me, and I'm happy to review the budget with them, so.
Thank you.
I can't hear you, Ruth. We couldn't hear you because I don't think the microphone.
Could hear Jeff.
Repeat what you just said.
Sure. Am I coming through a little better?
A little, little louder, maybe closer to the mic.
I was saying that the Council, the, the Commission received a budget overview back in May, so the Commission should understand the, the position of the airport going into the budget. The city is preparing a public document where you could view the airport budget, is my understanding. And if you have any detailed questions, such as the speaker, I would be happy to schedule a meeting and, and meet with that person one-on-one to discuss the budget. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have any more public input?
We have Mark Starrett.
Good evening. My name is Mark Starrett. When I was a little kid, my brother and I were always given a set of chores my dad wanted us to complete it. And being the younger brother, I got mine done first because I had to show the big brother how to do it. But bless his heart, he had to be asked 10 times to get that, those chores completed. So when he finally did get them completed, nobody appreciated it. It was like, yeah, thank you, finally got done. So that brings me to the EAA building, okay? When it finally got cleaned up, which it should have been, it's been almost, what, two years? And it's been almost a year since Jeff's been here that they finally got that mediation work done. I've done mediation work for, it's not that difficult, and it should have been something that one or two months of getting that accomplished. But, so now it is accomplished, that's great. Thanks for getting it done, but I don't really appreciate it now. It's too late. So that brings me to the, every day as I come into the airport, the sea breeze is right there, I'd see all these weeds, all that. Yesterday, they cut them down. Well, thank you. But it was bugging me for months. I almost got my own weed whacker out there to take care of it. A couple of the subjects, Black Hawk is wants to relocate again on, at the, across from the hangars where I'm located. And when they did their original demonstration, they did a great demonstration how they were not going to distract and disrupt anything or anything like that. They did not comply with what they promised. They are now going to go in there and pour a concrete pad sometime in October. And I'd like the City Council, I'd like the Airport Commission to discuss that with the City Council and see if we can keep them where they are. When I objected to it, there was only one place in the entire airport that they could be, and that was that location, the temporary location they were in. Well, now that they couldn't be there, they found another location. I'd like to, I think it's less disruptive to everybody on the airport if they stay over there. And there's a million reasons for them to, to do that. And if I'd like to have a greater discussion, and I think it'd be great if you could go to the City Council and bring that up, because when, when a disaster does happen, and it probably will, you can always say, I told you so. Those are always good, I told you so. Number of times we wanted to bring up hangar rents on the Commission, but we weren't allowed. Chambles always said, you know, you can't do that, it's, you're, you're part of the process and, and that's, you know, it's a no-no, stay away from that thing. But I'd like to get it into a real discussion of it. A lot of people don't know what originally happened out there early in the, when they built the new hangars on the west side, they couldn't rent them. And so what they did is they took, they decided, okay, they couldn't get the price they wanted, so we're going to increase the rent on the west side and reduce the rent on the east side. So my hangar basically tripled all at one time, okay? So they could get the other hangars rented. Mike Chambles always said we weren't charging enough money because if we were charging too much money, you wouldn't have a waiting list. Actually, our waiting list is pretty short based on the fear everyone has about Reed Hillview closing. Jeff wants to do a study on it. Originally, this was done with a survey, and I'd like to request a little more time, if I may. She said I could. She said I could request.
It's at your discretion whether you offer the speaker more time. If you do so, you'll, you'll be required to provide every public speaker the same amount of time.
There's nobody left.
I think, how about one more minute?
I, I'll go with one more minute. Okay, thank you. So I've, I've done my own survey, and that's, that's how our rents became where they are. It was, Chambles had done a survey, and he's very well-respected by other airport managers for jacking our rents up, and they're all trying to do the same thing. I paid $220 for a hangar in Salinas, which was much better than what I'm paying, the hangar I have here, and that I'm paying, by the time you figure property tax and everything, $500 a month. So I'd like to have a review. I don't see why we have to wait for a special report. I think we can, you know, it was good enough to raise the rent on us the first time just by doing a quick survey, but I think the process would be, should, should be started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And I do believe a lot of your questions and concerns are going to be addressed in the Airport Director's report today, this evening. Is there any more public input?
Ruth Erickson?
You can always have input after his report. Any more public input? Okay.
Do I have a?
Excuse me. Do I have a motion by one of the Commissioners to approve the consent item? Do I need to have public input or just?
Yes, you do.
Oh, okay, that's, I didn't realize that. That's new. Okay. Do I have any public input on the consent item to approve the minutes of the last Airport Commission meeting on May 22nd, 2024? Now, I will take a motion to approve the, the consent item for the minutes of the Airport Commission meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to Commission business, and we have two items there, and I'll let the Airport Director provide information on those.
So recently, the airport has been meeting with the company Zero Avia, which is involved in green technology and bringing, producing like hydrogen power plants and, and working on specific aircraft with, with said power plants to operate on hydrogen and prove to FAA that they can be certificated. So along those pursuits, we've been meeting with Zero Avia and, and looking at some of their needs and, and it, they've asked to, to expand their presence at the airport, which is a good thing for us as a revenue generating opportunity. Specifically to the request here before you tonight is, we are going to propose a ground lease at the north end of the aircraft apron. Katie, maybe we could show the more global view there on the monitor. So the more global view is up, up there on the screen for you.
Is there any way to expand that so it's a little bigger, just for the public?
You might be able to go to something called.
Does everyone have the handout? If you don't, I think there's copies up here.
You might be able to click on full view if it's up there. So anyway, the, so currently, they, they operate in the Bickle Building in the office in what they call Hangar One space. And so this is various pieces of equipment. This is 10,000 square foot. It is surrounded by aircraft movement areas there. It does meet all the requirements for setbacks from, from those aircraft movement areas. So, and the lease is written in a way that gives some approval authority to the airport management in terms of the equipment, how it's put in, in the space, how it's, and how it's oriented due to the sensitivity of being around aircraft movement areas. And we're looking at a three-year base term with, with two one-year options for extending the lease. And there is, we're looking at about, the rate is $2,300 a month to start. And so it's estimated with the average CPI increase somewhere around 80, check my notes, 80, should be over $85,000 over a three-year period for the use of this space. So at this point, we would be looking for the, the Commission to make a, have our discussion if there's any discussion questions, and then make a motion to, to make a recommendation, yea or nay.
Is this a public comment first?
Correct. Do we have any public comment?
Question about it? Who's paying for the improvement?
You have to fill out a form and go up forward.
Could we get you to come up to the mic?
Oh, you could just come up, I guess.
Yep.
You don't have to do that.
Just, you can just, no, it's okay.
Yeah.
No, I'm just curious about the, so the improvement, that land right now, there is a drainage ditch right there on that side of the ramp. So who's paying to fill that? Are you going to extend the ramp? And are, is the new tenant, are they going to cover the cost of all the concrete work and that to extend the ramp? So I mean, $2,300 sounds like a great, but they should be paying for any cost to improve that land. That would be my comment about it is, that doesn't seem like enough for, for the, the work that.
Any other comments?
No, just curious if, if it's a net, you know, black, you know, we're in the black on this deal versus as Brett pointed out, you know, more things in the red.
Same thing what Phil was saying. Somebody's got to know if they are negotiating, are they talking about paying for that cost? You can't have a negotiation if you haven't discussed that. Somebody's got to know that, Jeff. Have they talked about that?
I'm waiting for the chair to direct me to answer questions.
So that's the question. They, discussions already has to have been made. Somebody here already knows the answer to that question. That's what I'm telling you. And if they do do that, it would be nice if they extended that on out, and then eventually maybe that could be a run-up area, and then you can enter onto the taxiway there. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public for questions?
I fill out a card.
Yes. Min is next.
I didn't notice you walked up, you know, but I did fill out a card.
That's okay.
Hi, Min Vinatier. I've been on the airport for about 30 years, at, at the tenant and an operator, and most of the people here know who I am. I kind of have the airport best interest, in a sense. Love the idea, extending, new revenue, love the idea. But I agree with this gentleman right here. Who's going to pay for it? And what, what vehicle? And as you say somewhere along the way here, that is going to be, oh, you said it earlier, I didn't write it down, but you have the authority to tell how to park, where to park. Okay. Great. And again, is there somewhere in writing for all this stuff? This is the first time I heard of it. Just wondering what's going on. Thank you.
Are there any other public input on this item? Any other? If not, I will turn to the Airport Director and have him answer some of your questions on that. And also then we'll go to Commission questions and comments.
Okay. So first, the site is, does slope towards the drainage ditch. So there, there's, right up next to the apron, there's probably a, a three to four inch difference, and it slopes further away as you get back towards the ditch. And so yes, there, there is a planned improvement to bring in some base rock for the 10,000 square feet. And that would be anticipated to be base rock leveled and compacted. And then we are, they are proposing to put a super track pad surface on top of that that would be anchored down into the base, base rock. Again, they are looking to park equipment there that's generally on trailers. And so. Again, they are looking to park equipment there that, that's generally on trailers. And so it's not going to be a permanent cemented surface at this point, and that would be at the expense of the tenant. That was negotiated. And our job here is not to be revealing the exact documents and going down through, through each detailed word and, and how to word those, those things. So there is an existing lease that has been prepared. And so we're looking at this from a standpoint of airport policy and, and airport in terms of, of, you know, do we think this is creating conflicts, those types of things? And it has the potential, respecting the, the concerns here that, that both parties raised. Again, I stated that this is an area that is surrounded by aircraft movement area. And so while there is sufficient setback currently for the kinds of aircraft that we have coming in there, you know, if something were to change and we had a much larger aircraft, then we're going to have to modify how the space goes. So, and that's understood going in, and I believe that the lease has, has the ability for the airport to work with the tenant here in this case, Zero Avia, to address those things.
Might I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this going to be a secure location?
No.
No? It's going to be open?
Yes.
Okay. So they're just going to store stuff? They're going to pay for the base rock? Come in, compact it, put their little super whatever mat down?
And they're going to store things on?
That ten thousand square feet? That's it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, oh, and I would add that we did meet with the Jet Center because we wanted to make sure since they are, they take care of the aircraft parking assignments on, on the ramp. So we wanted to make sure that it was done with, with their, their support. And so at this point, there, there's support for that based on the current aircraft that are at the airport.
I have a question, if, if that's okay with the rest of the commission? Okay. I'm sure we all have some questions. If we're making a recommendation to city council to, are we making the, the recommendation that they approve this? If we are, I think we really need to see the lease so that we know more about it than, I hate approving something or recommending it if I don't know. I mean, I trust you, but I just feel like if we're recommending something, that we should have a chance to review it in, in advance. Those are my only thoughts. I worry about what type of equipment is being stored there and without knowing what's in the agreement, I don't know that we know what that equipment is and how big it is. So those are my concerns.
My only other concern is if, if the cleanup, after they're done with the lease, who's going to clean that up? You've got couple, probably a couple more than a couple of tons of base rock out there. And that's not really compatible, I mean, unless you plan on paving it or doing something else with it. Are they going to clean it up or, and put it back to normal? Like they found it? Or is it just going to stay there and then maybe release it to somebody else? Do, do we know?
I, I would hope that, that it would be enough of a solution that, that could become a usable space.
Okay. So we don't have to put a clause?
We have multiple tenants, right? We, Aris down there maintains a field truck, which currently right now goes on the corner of the apron. So, you know, you could actually free up the apron for an aircraft by, by having if that surface was there. Relative to the concerns about what type of equipment, it's various trailers and all the equipment is below fourteen thousand, or fourteen thousand, fourteen feet high. So it does not constitute an obstruction. And again, they, there is sufficient clearance from, from the taxiway center lines or the aircraft movement center lines. So.
This is a long-term thing, not just a short-term, is what you're saying.
Well, it's a three-year base lease.
With an option for two more.
Well, I mean, even if they leave, he plans on keeping this, the base rock and whatnot in place to try to release it. So I'm more concerned about the ramp and how much
Yeah.
area we have in there. If this is, was a temporary thing, I'd definitely want to see a clause in the lease about cleaning it all up at their cost. But since this is going to be a long-term thing, I don't think it's necessary because we could release it to somebody else or similar use.
Yeah, my, my question was just, as I was, it was before we had the discussion was, is to rephrase it. At the end, at the termination of the lease or the expiration of the lease, will the pad remain as an asset to the airport for, for additional revenue long-term?
I think it would be an asset of space that we could utilize because it's going to be a leveled surface, right? And so it creates some freedom of flexibility there. And, and one of our challenges is that we are a relatively small ramp currently, so.
Great, thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure that it was going to remain as an asset and that's, the more assets we have at the airport, the better.
Are there any more comments or questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, the, the only comment I would have after, you know, these, these questions to get a better understanding there. Seeing, you know, the, the history there of Zero Avia, I believe that they do have, they're international if I'm not mistaken, right? And they do ma, they do have three main offices worldwide, and I think Hollister is one of them. Of the, of the few, I think, I believe three or four. I think my comment would be that moving, you know, forward with this would be, would be great, just on the, on the state aspect that, or not just state, but nationwide, global aspect, that if we are going to continue on with hydrogen kind of, you know, improvement with aviation, as I've seen in the last two, three years, it would be great to continue on that partnership here in Hollister. But then also, I want to have, you know, the professionals in, in aviation to ask the right questions like the commission has been doing. But after doing, you know, just research and working with Zero Avia with their kind of showing off their, their jets and their, and their helicopters and really seeing the improvements they're doing with hydrogen, I think that's going to be great for the, the future of, you know, going green. Thanks.
Any more questions by the commission? Any more comments? Do we want to make a recommendation? Does anyone want to make a motion to recommend this to the city council?
Again, it's at your discretion. If you open a public comment again to one speaker, you will need to open it up to all speakers.
Do any other speak, do any other public have any comments besides Min?
Just one question. If they're going to have hydrogen on that pad, that's the only thing we should know about, I think.
Min, do you want to come up all, very briefly?
Yes. Quick comment. Just to follow up the Commissioner Martin comment. So as I understand it, there could be base rock on there. And I understand then Zero Avia going to put a mat on top of that base rock at their cost. Okay. So let's assume that the end of the lease, they say, I'm done. We out of here. Are they going to take that mat back? Or they leaving it there? That's my thought. If they are taking that back, as a jet operator and maintainer, base rock is not our friend. We didn't even come up. We can talk about FOD. There's a couple of tons of FOD. That's one of the reasons why the helicopter moved the other side, because they put that mat down, put base rock down. It blow off. We got FOD on the ramp. Just want to know. Thank you.
Just look at Cal Fire's pad right now, what kind of shape it's in. If they take their mat off, that's the most likely.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the commission, do we, does anyone want to make a motion? Bring this forward to the city council?
I'd like to make a motion to, we bring this to city council for approval.
Do we have a second? Do we need to take a roll call vote?
No, a, a simple vote would be adequate.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes to bring it forward to the city council. Next item is the Kimley Horn contract extension.
Yes, so we are going to, so Kimley Horn currently is our consultant, our engineer and planning consultant that supports the basically the FAA criteria selected consultant to help us through with the airport improvement program grants as well as the bipartisan infrastructure law grant opportunities. So at this point, we are, we are kind of coming near the end of their typical five-year contractual timeframe. However, a project that was anticipated in that five-year window is the Taxiway Alpha Reconstruction Project. And so in reaching out to FAA to get a status on, on our grant award with that, we discussed the fact that they had a preference for Kimley Horn since it was inside their five-year scope to do the design work for that project. Their familiarity, so they would like us to, to add an additional year to have Kimley Horn prepare the design for the Taxiway Alpha Reconstruction Project. And so we would be going to the council as part of submitting a, a grant application. We, we basically, it needs to also be a contract for Kimley Horn to do that design work. And then they, while they're, it would be anticipated that they would also provide just their ongoing general engineering and planning support to the airport up until we do complete a consultant selection process. So so again, we're just looking for this to be, this is going to be an item that we take to the council and so we're looking for the commission just basically to say yes. So is the commission familiar with the consultant planning role with what they do? They, they, things like the documents you've had given you in the binders such as the airport layout plan update and they helped with the taxiway concepts that I developed on, for the west side. So other types of roles that they do, in the report out section, we'll cover that we're looking at the preliminary plan set for the new air attack base on, on the, located on the west side of the airport for the Cal Fire. So they're helping us with some technical aspects of that review. So again, those are roles that the Kimley Horn plays with, with support to us in their consultant capacity.
Thank you for that. Do we have any public comment on this item? No public comment? Do we have any questions from the commission?
Yes, are the rates going to remain consistent with their current rates? For the extension? Or are they going up, they going down? For any, any, as long as the extension goes?
Yeah, I would, I would assume that they probably had a, a small increases, like a CPI increase. Yeah.
I was quite sure it's a one-year extension?
Yes.
Chair Wells, I just want to remind the commission and yourself that this is your meeting and that it is open to the public, but it's an opportunity for you to do your business. And so I would advise you that, to, to not receive questions from the audience and also to admonish those that are calling out from the audience.
Thank you for that. Fred, you're always welcome to email the director for, with your questions or meet with him. Any more questions or comments from the commission? None? Do I have a motion by the commission to recommend this move forward for a one-year extension of Kimley Horn's contract as noted by the airport director?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, our staff and commissioner reports. We'll start with the airport director report. And he's going to report on status of airport projects and operations.
Yes, and I would emphasize that this is a, a combination of bringing the commission up to speed with things that have, that we've been working on since we last met, so. So in, in, so this is, this is an, meant to be an operational update of things that have been accomplished or that we're looking at since, since we've last met. So moving into that, so first item was on June eighteenth, the city council, we took a through-the-fence access permit to them and, and they approved that item based on contingent review for contingent satisfactory review from FAA. And that was for Wisc Arrow to, to utilize the through-the-fence building. So that is my update and the FAA review is ongoing and, in my opinion, going well. So that should be wrapping up here soon. We had two lease amendments that we did, and again, that was for Wisc Arrow in two of their alternate locations located over on the west side of the airport at Ninety Sky Lane Drive and Wisc Weatherly Building. Again, these are, are good things, positive things for the airport and the revenues. These were four-year extensions for ongoing use of those spaces. We completed hangar inspections where, where we did have the fire marshal come out and, and accompany, accompany us in our inspections of the T-hangers in all of the buildings. And the fire marshal also took the opportunity to make that the commercial inspection under, under the fire code for the city. So that was conducted from July seventeenth through the nineteenth so that those were completed. We are currently in the process of mailing out results of those through inspection letters to communicate back to the tenants and that's expected to be completed by this Friday, actually, on the thirtieth. So Cal Fire, the update there is we had a recent meeting for regarding their concrete pad, which has been a project that was approved prior to my being here. And it is an extension of the current apron. So that, so we had an onsite meeting and Cal Fire has finally worked through their contractual issues and have a contractor that are now ready to come in and do the cement over the base rock, which again, would be an improvement to that area. We've been monitoring that area quite a bit because again, the base rock can be a FOD issue. And so once it is there, that again, I will emphasize that is an extension of the apron for aircraft parking. That is not going to be an active helipad. So, so again, technically a helipad is where a helicopter can lift or take off on. That is not what this is in, is supposed to be. So it will be a parking space and we will move forward from there. Again, I alluded to on, on the Kimley Horn item because their, their contract, one of- Again, I alluded to on, on the Kimley Horn item because their, their contract, one of the services in general services they do for us. We are looking at the CAL FIRE's preliminary design for a site plan of their approximately 16-acre ground lease over on the west side for the new air attack base. And it seems like the state has, you know, kind of dedicated some resource to moving this forward. So we're thrilled that they're, they're wanting to, to meet and they're eager. And so, the airport has been working through those site plans for some of the technical setbacks and some of the technical issues. So again, I want to emphasize this is preliminary plans. And now that we're at a point where we think we've got the site plan pretty unified based on all the clearances where it needs to be, we anticipate a submittal with the city's planning department. And so, and then going forward, once the city's, basically goes to their entitlement process, their review at the point that they've kind of reviewed it from the city perspective, then we would be sending this off to the FAA review. The next item is that we have FAA grant opportunities here, so been working with the FAA grant. Our bipartisan infrastructure law grant opportunity this year, we went out to, we went out to bid, we issued an RFP on July 17th and that's to move the perimeter fence located on the north side of runway 2-4. As it goes out from, from the corner there before the fence line turns north out to San Felipe. So a section of about, I want to say 1,500 feet of fence is going to be relocated to incorporate, make sure that the fence line is outside of the safety area. So, again, so the progress is we, we issued the RFP on July 17th. We closed that RFP at August 8th and we had six responses and two were under the engineer's estimate. And the status moving forward is that we are waiting FAA's authorization to award bids, to give us the authorization to award the bid. On the airport improvement program, again, that is anticipated to be the design work for the taxiway Alpha reconstruction. So our taxiway has been identified as a failing grade of pavement. So it's been deteriorated for, for quite some time. So we're excited to have the project moving forward. So again, we are now awaiting FAA the, to give us the award of the grant, but we are anticipating that is going to move through. We had completed an independent fee estimate for the airport engineers consultant, the, the proposal from Kimley Horn to do that. So you get an independent fee analysis to make sure that the, that we're getting value for, for the work. And yeah, so now we're waiting for word from FAA. So at any time, we could be taking an item forward to the, to the city council on that. Because a lot of times FAA wants a quick turnaround. We are also working on updating the five-year airport capital improvement table or ACIP plan, which would be submitted to the FAA and then the follow-up of that would be scheduling a, a meeting for airport management. And typically, it's your, also your engineering and planning consultant would be part of that team. So we would be having a discussion with the ADO's office, the airport district office. We have a whole team that's dedicated to the airport, so we have a planner, engineer, et cetera, that are all dedicated to reviewing Hollister items. So we look to get buy-in on the priority expressed through those five years of projects and improvements. So, look forward to that opportunity to work with the ADO's office. So then moving on, we're just wanted to, for those of you that might not have been aware, we did hold a July 4th event at the airport. So here's a map rendering of the event. So you can see we did close the runway 2-4 for a period of time and we used the north end of the apron. And feedback was that this was well received. It was a, considered an excellent family event, I think as expressed by one of our council members. And we filled the parking area pretty well. We anticipate, well, we estimated that about 4,000 people were in attendance. And again, I want to express my gratitude towards the tenants. We had sent letters out and asked for, for cooperation and that sort of thing. And the airport tenants were absolutely spot-on with cooperation. So again, appreciation to all of you for helping set the bar for, for a very good event on the airport. For those of you that may be familiar, the DK Turbans building, that, that's the business that rents one of our buildings, right? So again, here's an example of a building that reverted back to the airport a few years back and we get the rent from that. But we got a 30-year-old building and the roof has had a lot of leak issues. So we've been working with, trying to get a roofing contractor and come in with, with a proposal that would be under the $60,000. This is a threshold where we would have to go out to a more formalized bid process. So we worked with collecting several different proposals, but this was the low proposal. And this is bay quality roofing out of Watsonville. They started on August 5th and currently we are anticipating the completion date of the roofing project is today. And that was a $58,000 project and it's stayed on budget, so. Update on the conference room and bathroom there in the Kenan Hangers. So we all know that that did take almost well over a year and a half, I believe. But yes, that was recently finally finished. So, and basically from, from that, that is, the, the report is that it's finished. We did send out an email on August 19th to tenants that are located in the Kenan Hangers that the bathroom is open. And the airport is currently contemplating the, the future use of the conference room. And so, we'd be looking to schedule a, a meeting to discuss the situation with, with Hollister Airmen's Association.
And the EAA.
Yeah, oh, sorry, yes, and, and the EAA, thank you. So then we have, we have a new system that we just put in place in May. This system allows the airport to actually collect real-time data from, from aircraft operations based on the ADS-B 2 reporting out technology. So this company is called 1200 Arrow, so it's 1200 dot arrow dot com, I believe. They, they are very price-friendly when comparing similar types of services. And this is a model of, of a monthly report before you. So August not being quite done, it collects things like the daily operation counts there. And then as it scans through, it collects data as to which runways are used and, and the different directions. So again, as a airport manager slash director, you, if you're talking with, with FAA, the more real-time data you have to, to support positions of various things when it comes to discussions of ACIP projects. And everyone may remember that our chair reported out back a month or two ago that the city council at Watsonville chose to close the crosswind runway, right? Well, so this is an example of a database that allows us to collect the real-time data and store what kind of use our crosswind runway gets. And so, we would be able to push back on, on thoughts of wanting to close that because we use that runway, for example, just about every day somewhere between 12:00 and 1:00 PM. Operations shift from, from runway 3-1 to, to runway 2-4 because of the predominant wind pattern. So, this second report right here, Katie can bring up the cumulative for the three-year, three-month period. So we started only two weeks in May, but the, did you have the other report that showed the? The one, the, the count for the June, July and August? It was pretty impressive. Yes, so, so I think the, the big thing there that I would highlight is that for, for June, July and the month of August, which is not complete, we were already at 13,400 operations at the airports. So that gives you an idea of the level of activity that we've been receiving. So that's a very good sign. And so, and this is, this is a fairly minimal cost throughout the, for the annual fee on that. I believe we paid somewhere right around less than $4,000 for the, for the service for the year. Next item to update the commission on airport econ, economic impact study. And we talked about issuing an RFP for that. So again, that was a cooperative procurement with the Hollister, Marina, Salinas and Watsonville airports. And we did issue the MOU, was approved by the city council on, at the June 18th meeting. And then the RFP was issued on August 15th and it is available. If anybody cares to read the RFP, it's actually on our airport webpage under current projects. We had, during this time since we last met, we've had two incidents at the airport involving aircraft. So we had a, one gear up landing and one, one plane by plane flipped over. So, so just keeping you guys apprised of the fact that we are an active airport and things happen. Not every day is a good day to be a pilot. So those of you that may remember on your airport tour, as we went around the airport complex, we were having a quite lively population of squirrels. And so, we moved forward with increasing our wildlife deterrent efforts. And so we entered into a contract with Gavlin Pest Control for a one-year contract to, to help suppress the, the goal. The, the goal was to suppress the squirrels there at the airport, which then the subsequent, the birds that prey on the squirrels hopefully will be reducing. And so we've been doing that since just before the 4th of July event being held. It was about a week before that we started the initial effort on that. And just in my survey, as I go around the airport, I'm seeing a whole lot less squirrels out there. So it's appearing to be very effective. And that would conclude my operational updates for the commission.
Thank you, Jeff, I appreciate it. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have Ruth Erickson.
Hi, yeah, Ruth Erickson, I'm president of Hollister Airmen's Association. I want to remind anybody that doesn't know, we have been at the airport since 1946 and hope that we can stay at the airport and that our meeting room stays with the organizations because we do a lot of volunteer work at the airport when we have events. And we need a place to meet and we need a place to meet in the evenings when people are off work. So that's first thing. The second thing I had to thought, think about was this. On our agendas here, it shows staff report, public comment, and then commission questions. Is there a chance that we could put public comment after the commission? Because when the commission has comments, we can't comment on your comments. We need to be able to comment on the staff report and the commissioners' report. Because otherwise, we can't say anything. So is there a chance we could have the public comment after instead of before the commission? That's my, what I had to say.
Is there any other public comment? No. Okay, commission, oh, we do have one more, Mark Stewart.
I just want to make a quick comment about the, this Zero Avia storage area. It just seems strange to me, it's, it's like a warehouse without being a warehouse. And that just, it's just odd and we got to know what they're putting out there. You know, what, what, what the product is, if it's hydrogen or whatever it is, that needs to be known. And I'm assuming if it's a warehouse, then they're going to generate all kinds of forklift traffic back and forth across the ramp there. So there's just a lot of questions that I think need to be looked at before you guys make a decision on that. Thank you.
No more public comment? We've already made a motion to take that Zero Avia to the city council? And so, that's kind of, you're welcome to go to city council meeting and make comments though, before they vote on it, I guess. That's all I can say. Commission, commissioner, comments and questions? I have a couple, so may I start first? I wanted to know, for the, the DK building, is there currently, is that currently rented? Or are we fixing the roof and everything to hopefully bring new tenants in?
The DK building is rented to the DK Turbans business.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if it was called the DK Hangar or not, if it kept that name.
I think everybody is, just knows it as that building for reference, yes.
Right, okay, so it does have a tenant, okay, perfect. And are they still paying rent to be there even though the roof has some leaks or?
Yes, they have been very patiently waiting, yes, and paying their rent.
Okay, good. And let's see. For the, the 1200 dot arrow site, is that open to the public to get on there to look at the information? Or can the public or any of the tenants obtain that information on a regular basis if they wanted to?
No, we pay for the access because it is a proprietary database that they build to and then create all the reports and that kind of function. So it's not, so it's not the same as like a flight radar type of thing. But I would think any, well, I don't know, they, they, they do design it for supporting the airports, but I'm not sure if they actually support it for individuals. Yeah, you know, there are apps, right, yeah.
Is the $4,000 for the year, is that per year or is that an initial fee? And did the contract to do that, was it just for one year to see if this is information that we can't get somewhere else? That we need to, we want to pay for? Or is it something that you're planning to do a long-term agreement?
We entered into a one-year service agreement for this, this, to see what the data collection would be. And it is evolving, so, and again, this is meant to support particularly at the cost level that it is. It's really meant to help GA airports with the collection of real-time data and being able to use that in your, you know, justification when you talk to FAA for grants and, and those other types of things. So, it's very, very crucial. It's very, very crucial, as an airport manager, most GA airports, you would be guessing at how many operations you have. So the ability to collect this information and share it in a very nice, presentable fashion is very good. It has a lot of other functionality beyond just the reporting, but we just wanted to let you guys know that we are using one of these sites and we're collecting valuable data for the airport.
No, I appreciate the data, and I think it was great to be able to visually see that, especially for the public, too. So I appreciate that, I just had the question about the cost. And let's see, for the pest control from Gavlin, it's a one-year agreement, and can you tell me what the cost of that is?
The ongoing service agreement is approximately $25,000 for the year, and again, this is pest control around the entire airport, and so we would be looking to evaluate that at the end of that continued effort to see what the suppression gets us as a result.
This might answer your question a little better.
You have probably poison going out there, he's planting poison, traps, whatever, and then, you know those squirrel traps you see by the side of the road? It's like a three, four-prong approach, we had to use it out at Fraser Lake. Two grand a month is worth it if it doesn't undermine the runway and the taxiways by far, so.
One last question on that, does this cover pest control within the hangars? If you have a problem with your hangar and you notice that there's rodents, not caused by your refrigerator or food, what, can you get a box to put outside it, or would we talk to you? Not that I have any problems, but I'm just curious.
Tenants are typically responsible for rodent control or pest control inside of their own hangar space. We have assisted with some investigations as to what might be causing rodents to continue to show up. This is, remember, we have 345 acres, and we were being overrun by squirrels, and that squirrels attract the coyotes and attract birds in there, and so we've noticed many times that coyotes got dug in under the fence to chase squirrels and rabbits, so. Yeah, I think, Eric, I appreciate your perception from the standpoint, so yeah, we're looking at about $1,700 a month was what we looked at, but we had to purchase 80 of the trap boxes, and so those are put out, and so again, we bring, the service comes out, and they service those 80 at least once a month.
Thank you for that, that's all my questions, comments? Do we have any other comments or questions from the other commissioners?
I do. On the 1200 arrow data that we're collecting, is it possible to utilize that data for future application of grants, for grant money because of the use of the airport?
I certainly think, again, that the usage and where collecting, like which runways are used, et cetera, that does help us in our grant requests.
Great.
Yes.
Any other questions from commissioners or comments? None? Okay, we'll move on to commissioner reports. I don't have a report, except for I just want to say I'm trying to get the EAA chapter back together and the HAA, and I would like to plan a Young Eagles fly-in, or Young Eagles event. One time, we have a donation that we received of $5,000, and we would like to put that to use, and I believe Watsonville is willing to come in because they run a program there, we don't really have our own program, and so if anyone wants to take part in that, I'm going to need volunteers, I just want to put that out there. If you're interested, let me know. I have to talk to Watsonville first, I'm just in the initial stages of trying to get that planned. It's a school started, and I think it would really be good to go to the schools and try to get some participation. Thank you.
One comment, Jeff, the pad for the storage pad, we're talking about FOD and whatnot, maybe we should stipulate what kind of material they use for that pad, maybe bring in the base rock, but have them cap it with asphalt or something that's not going to produce a lot of FOD in the area. They can still put their mat down over the top of the asphalt, we just have something that when they pull up the mat, isn't going to end up in engines, you know, or crops or anything else.
Yeah, so I drafted the lease in a way that the improvements stay with the airport, so the mat would stay there, and again, the mat is a type that it gets anchored down, and this is not a location that I would say is suitable to put in aircraft. This is just additional space for things like fire trucks, we have helicopter dollies and other things of that nature that could potentially use that space if Zero Avia was not using the space. And again, we may have to reevaluate this on an ongoing basis, because if, let's say, our largest hangar, if that were to get a tenant with a very large aircraft, it could change the wingspan, coming, trying to come down onto the apron, right? So there's a given to take here, our current apron is set up as a small aircraft apron. It's meant for, primarily for little Cessnas and gliders to move around on the apron, so if we get a bigger aircraft coming, that's certainly an issue to that bigger hangar, right? So that hangar is big enough to accommodate something like a Gulfstream V. So now you're talking about tip-to-tip 100 to 110-foot wingspan, well, you have a physical limitation where the pavement exists today, the layout of the taxiway over to the existing heiress buildings, so you do have some physical limitation as to what could come on to that end of the ramp anyway, so. So again, this is meant to try to help out one of our perceived to be good tenants, and their hydrogen production or their hydrogen storage, it happens in, inside of a DOT-approved trailer for containment, so anytime that there's hydrogen there, it's going to be in that containment trailer, so that that's a DOT, Department of Transportation-rated safety trailer.
I just want to remind the commissioners that this is time for commissioner reports. We've already discussed that item, we made a motion. If you have any other comments or questions, you can certainly submit them to the airport director. Do we have any other commissioner reports?
Thank you, Chair, yeah, just super quick. You know, it's been a while since we had a meeting, but, you know, the summer was very active. Again, I want to say thanks to everyone that was involved with the 4th of July show, using the airport, kind of exposed the community to go out to the airport, to go to see breezes and, you know, just be out there and really see what it's all about, and kind of, actually, there were some folks that paid attention to the conditions inside of the building, so I know once it comes back, you know, at least the community can actually see, you know, the need for that, right? Because we are having folks go out there, and just a big shout-out because of the collaboration with the County Express, right? Getting people busts out there and parks and wreck, it was just great, and I have, I got a lot of great feedback on that. Also, just another comment, with all the fires going on, I know CAL FIRE, this is a prime space, you know, because of the weather for, you know, to tackle a lot of the wildfires. We, Samiato County, the Fire Council, Fire Safe Council did receive a grant from the state. I can't think of the number, but it was tens, thousands, hundreds of thousands for wildfire prevention, and so I believe that it's, and it's through the CAL FIRE grant system, and so we're going to be receiving, Samiato County, in addition to neighboring counties, are going to be receiving, you know, grant and help to not just help with wildfire prevention, but educate the community, as went to a couple of meetings that the Samiato Land Trust put on last week in Trespinos and Pisinas out at Jefferson School, and so, but it was very well-attended just to help out folks. And again, it comes back to the airport because it's very active. CAL FIRE was actually bringing in the, their CAL FIRE planes during the 4th of July show. A lot of kids thought that was part of the show, no, they were actually busy working to tackle those fires, so I just wanted to say thanks, because a lot of folks reaching out to me as a commissioner to see how they can help, and I just let them know, we can reach out to our director, but it's up to, you know, the professionals up in the sky. So I just wanted to really let you know that we are receiving help on the state side as well. Thanks.
Thank you, any other reports?
Yes, for my report, I continually try to look at opportunities either on the airport or around the airport to bring new ideas, new thoughts, maybe even new revenues to the airport, and I'm happy to say that we actually have, on September 4th, we have our first meeting with Gavilan College to look at some opportunities that would allow them to move their aviation program from San Martin over to Hollister. It's preliminary, it's our first meeting, but let's keep our fingers crossed that we do, we present well to them, and that they see it favorable, as Gavilan starts to bring more things to Hollister and obviously remain in Gilroy, but bring more things to Samiato County and as it leaves Santa Clara County. So we'll report back on how that went at our next meeting, but that's on September 4th.
Any other reports? Thank you for that, commissioners, your great feedback and comments, I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for attending.